Good evening. Calling to order, the Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Town of South Windsor Planning and Zoning Commission. Let's all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you have a cellphone with you, would you please make sure it's silenced? So, our secretary, oh, let's see, who are we missing tonight?
Dex Stephanie.
And Alan?
And Paul.
So, Paul, okay, so, I think we will...
You're missing three commissioners and you have two alternates.
Okay, so we'll seat Commissioner Baganski for Commissioner Cavanero and Commissioner Willett for Commissioner Dexter. We have one less than that covered. Okay, so, I wonder if our Vice Chair would read the notice of the public hearing?
Kevin may not have a copy, I don't know, Josh, do you have a copy you could give them?
I've got one.
I left my, this week's package in my car, which was only supposed to be in for an hour, and it was in for three days, so it's still there.
Notice is hereby given that there will be a public hearing on Tuesday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven PM in council chambers at the South Windsor Town Hall to consider the following: application number one, application twenty-four dash zero five P, Francisco and Katie Rivera, done business as Bake Me Happy, request for a five-year major home occupation for Cottage Bakery at two twenty-two Graham Road, A twenty Zone. Number two, application twenty-four dash zero four P, South Windsor High School Athletic Fields and Campus Improvements, request for special exception to Table three point one point one A and Site Plan of Development for the following: a new synthetic turf field, including special exception requests to six point four point three point four for athletic field lighting, seven new tennis courts, and four pickleball courts, and traffic and circulation improvements around the school campus on the property located at one sixty-one Nevers Road, A twenty Zone. Copies of the application are on file in the office of the Town Clerk and/or the Planning Department and online at HTTPS www.south windsortennessee-kenneticut.gov/PlanningDepartment pages, Planning and Zoning Commission applications. At this hearing, interested persons may be heard and written comments by the public will be received by mail or email. Persons who may require accommodation can contact the staff at eight six zero six four four two five one one, extension two three two nine. Stephen Wagner, Chair.
Thank you. So the way we conduct the public hearings is first we allow the applicant to make their presentation, then we ask for comments from the staff, which would be our Town Planner and our Town Engineer, or Director of Planning, I should say, and then we open for comments from the public in any order, and then finally we'll get commissioners' comments. So let's start with the application twenty-four O five P, The Rivers Bake Me Happy. And when you come to speak, would you please both introduce yourself and sign in?
So, I'm Katie Rivera. I submitted the application along with my husband to run a cottage bakery out of our home. A cottage bakery is pretty much just a home-based bakery, you don't need any extra equipment, you just use your same equipment that you have in your kitchen, it allows you to sell your goods at like artisan fairs, farmers' markets, and along with doing like custom orders, like custom celebration cakes that I would have people come pick up or go and meet them out in the community.
All right, thank you, is it all?
I think so.
It's pretty simple, right?
It is pretty simple.
Okay.
I'll be the wordy one.
Town Planner?
So this is an application for a five-year major home occupation for Cottage Bakery at two twenty-two Graham Road in our A twenty Zone. As indicated, they would like to apply for Cottage Industry License, which is issued through the state of Connecticut, and they regulate the cottage industries in the home, it is not subject to our local health department approvals. The applicant intends to produce baked goods, candies, breads to be sold at farmer markets as well as other vendors, as well as having special orders to be picked up at her home. The reasons for requiring planning and zoning approval for major home occupations are to see that the home occupation is clearly secondary use of the building from dwelling purposes, home occupation is compatible with permitted residential uses in the residential district, residential character of the dwelling and neighborhood are preserved, and all residents have freedom from excessive noise, traffic nuisance, fire hazards, offensive odors, pollutants, et cetera. Performance criteria that we have are the maximum of twenty-five percent of your floor area can be dedicated to the occupation, there can be no visible, from the outside of the dwelling, that you would know the occupation's ongoing, there's no entrance that can be added solely for the occupation, no more than one non-resident employee is allowed, you can't create a volume of traffic that's unusual for the neighborhood that you're in, all parking needs must be met on site, and then the commission can require screening if you feel that the parking area needed to be screened from adjacent properties. With your packet, I think you were provided, the applicant gave us a floor plan, currently the site is serviced by public water and sewer, they do not have, intend to have any non-resident employees, they would be allowed to install a two-square-foot sign if they so chose, I don't believe that's in the plans right now, but that would be through a zoning permit if they wanted to. The applicant's narrative indicated that they would have special orders would arrange for pickups between nine AM and eight PM, and the customers would be directed to park in their driveways. If this application is approved, the applicant will be required to return this to this commission again in five years upon the expiration of the permit period. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the Town Engineer?
No comments, thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll open the comments from the public. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor or have questions or comments or opposed to this application? Seeing and hearing none, we'll take comments from Commissioners. Commissioner Viteri?
Uh, no, no comment.
Commissioner Foley?
No comment. No comment, thank you.
Commissioner Willett?
Curious about what you would expect for a daily volume or weekly volume of cars parked there or coming in the driveway?
Um, I think mainly we want to do like the fairs on the weekends, so that would just be us making things and bringing it out. If I was doing special orders, maybe two or three a week. I work full-time, so I don't have a ton of time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Baganski?
No comment.
All right, I did have one question. Mrs. Lipe, you spoke to the Superintendent of our Pollution Control about whether or not we have a concern with discharges that this business might make?
Yeah, I did speak with Tony Manfree, and he did not have any concerns with the scale of this operation.
Okay, so, any disposal of oils and stuff was not a...
Not a concern, no.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioners, is there any other comment or question, any reason to hold this open? Are you all set?
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing at seven eleven? Hmm, I'd rather not. Well, you could propose a change to the agenda. I mean, we're in the public hearing, so if they close the public hearing, open the public hearing. Okay. All right, so now we'll bring up application twenty-four dash zero four P, the South Windsor High School Athletic Fields and Campus Improvements.
Thank you for having me, I'm Chris Hulk, I'm the Director of Design and Construction for Field Turf and President of CEH Construction, or CEH Engineering Consulting. How's this? Here tonight, on behalf of the South Windsor Board of Education. So just for clarity, we're anticipating this to be probably a two-meeting kind of night. We're going to go through our presentation, answer all the questions, and then as we go through this process, any questions, comments, additions, subtractions, any things that might come up through the question and answer from the public, we'll make one last set of revisions to the plan so that for the next meeting, we'll be able to have one nice clean approval set instead of multiple submissions, submissions, submissions. So, the main goal of this particular project is to solve multiple issues that the South Windsor Public Schools currently have on the site. Townwide, I believe that there's an overall need for additional fields, so the first pillar would be to increase the quality and quantity of the existing fields on-site. The school and town have been trying to get a lit field for quite a while, so one of the main pillars on this particular project is to get a lighted, multipurpose field. And then a major improvement that they want to do is to get emergency access, so both traffic and safety to be improved on the site. As I'll go through in a few minutes, you'll see that the overall layout of the existing site is a little needs improvement. And then finally, the tennis courts were built, I believe, in the sixties or so, have been maintained in the same spot. I believe the town puts a significant amount of money and effort into trying to keep those playable, but as I'll show you, we need to basically reconstruct those, to kind of get them back up to current standards. Bless you. So the first couple of pillars being the need for additional field space, a lighted field, and to improve access. This is a conceptual rendering that kind of shows of approximately where the field would be. This is a little bit an older one, so the plan has changed a little bit, but gives you kind of an idea, the field would kind of be tucked along the side of the high school annex or the whopping building. Have an improved access path that will go from Ires Road to the back parking lot that's adjacent to the track. Then you can kind of see the high school in the background, which is kind of an overall conceptual plan to give you a little bit of an idea of kind of what the project is looking Here, again, conceptual layout of the tennis and pickleball courts. This area is currently being used as practice field, throwing events, and then where the, that's where the proposed tennis court's going to go, and the proposed pickleball area is basically just grass field area that's used as practice field area. The green space over there just shows the overlay of the existing practice facilities. On the bottom of the side of the screen there, that's the community center, and upper side being the school. So again, just kind of a conceptual rendering to give you an idea of kind of what the project's looking like. So to give you a little bit of a history on the overall project and the site itself, this is a GIS view of the aerial of the site. This one was from nineteen sixty-six. You can see the school is there, the track is there, in the same location that it's been for quite a while, obviously it's gone through some improvements. In the upper left-hand corner, you can see the area of the field improvements, you can see the existing tennis courts that are, it looks like they're under construction there, with also the Little League field and the basketball court. And then in the bottom right-hand corner, where the tennis courts are proposed to go, you can see that was previously a parking lot, and again, the brook that's located between the school and that parking lot. Getting a little bit more of an updated view, you can see this one is from two thousand and five, in the upper left-hand corner, you still see the tennis courts and the Little League field with the grass area between the tennis courts and the walking building. You can see the track and field still in the same location, happens to be a grass field at that point, and then in the bottom right-hand corner, where we're doing our proposed tennis courts, it's been converted over to a grass practice field with throwing events. Kind of the most up-to-date that we had on here for the clarity is, again, upper left-hand corner, still the same conditions, you can see the track and field was updated at some point within that last couple of years, between two thousand and five and two thousand and nineteen, I think it was probably two thousand and twelve-ish or so. And again, the grass area down on the bottom right-hand corner. So a couple of things I wanted to point out about the layout, and this is still the same layout that they currently have today, there's really only one access to the school itself. That's the school driveway that comes off of Ires Road, runs along the two practice fields there, the game fields for soccer and lacrosse, then travels down and splits off into the various parking lot areas. Then if you continue down, you go basically in front of the school, travel down the slope, and you connect with Nevers, right across the street from the community building, the community center, excuse me. So there's really only one site access, which makes it very difficult for emergency vehicles to be able to service the school. It makes it very difficult for people to access the school during pickup and drop-off operations, and then just overall, the ability of traffic flow to move around the school and get in and out severely limited just because of the existing access. Couple of other things I just want to make pretty clear about how the site currently is. Under the zoning regulations, there's a hundred-foot required setback for the athletic field lighting that we're proposing for the new field. It's a little bit difficult to see where the property line is, but generally it's kind of where the tree line is. So you can see on the track and field, it's just significantly too close to the property line to be able to meet your zoning regulations and put lights there. The fields that are grass that's down along Nevers on the right side of the field there, that would not fit the proposed field size, and also would not be able to have the lights there because it'd just be too close to Nevers. And then the two grass fields on the kind of upper right-hand corner, while there's probably a possibility of getting lights on those fields, the goal of this is to add field space. So if you look around the site, there's really only one spot that we can propose to do a field, which actually add a field without losing a field or losing multiple fields. So if we were to propose this on top of that grass field, we would basically be losing probably both of those fields to add one turf field. So that's why we felt the area of the existing tennis courts with that grass slope is really underutilized for the space that it's in. You can see the nearest parking space to the tennis courts is several hundred feet away, you have to walk down a very significant slope. I'm not sure of the existing grades, but I think it's in excess of fifteen to twenty percent, so it's pretty substantial. So we really want to focus on getting that area to the most utilized it could be. Then as far as the tennis courts in the bottom right-hand corner, we felt that the ability to add some parking spaces there to fit in a spot that's currently been developed as multiple different things, parking lot, practice field, that it would be a good reuse of the space. It would also open it up for use by the community, being closer to Nevers Road, and you know, baseball field, a lot of the other athletic events that are around there. Obviously, pickleball is something that's been growing in popularity throughout the country, its popularity is increasing through the school as well, so that's something that we wanted to take into account where we could position that in a way that would have the least impact on the neighbors. So that is basically on the, kind of the upper side of the access path for the school. The nearest house is, depending where you measure from, is right around five hundred feet away from the nearest court, and that's basically in all directions. So we took a great deal of consideration in when we were selecting where to actually do these improvements, and we had various meetings with the school, with the police department, they had various studies done to get to this point where we were proposing these improvements. So I'll start over here on the, where we're going to be proposing the tennis courts, just to zoom in a little bit on the current existing conditions, this is an aerial photo that we took. So you can see the existing practice fields, you can see the throwing events, those are kind of the fenced-in areas. On the top left and bottom right, there's a town drainage swale that was installed over the last several years that conveys flow down to the Plum Gully Brook.
When you start showing us things, could you refer to the drawing numbers that we should be looking at in our paper, if possible?
Sure, that would be, I think, layout, or this would be existing conditions sheet two, I believe, for the tennis courts. Could be the third page or fourth page?
Okay.
Yep. With the Plum Gully Brook on kind of the top part of the page there, but as you can see, from the existing aerial, still, you know, practice field fairly underutilized for, you know, the, this space there. This is just some existing photos, again, to just give you a little bit of background, you can see others, some trees and vegetation that grows along the Plum Gully Brook. As part of the wetlands process, one of the conditions of approval was actually do you, I think it was a twenty-foot buffer for basically a low maintenance, low grow type of seating, so it would really kind of expand and help protect that wetland buffer a little bit. So, on the upper right-hand corner picture there, it would basically be from the sort of the brown spot going out about twenty more feet would be only mowed once a year. Same thing on the bottom right-hand corner, from the tree line, basically over twenty feet to the left would be only mowed once a year. So here is, again, the layout sheet that is, I believe, the LA two. So this shows the overlay of the courts on that existing aerial. The next couple of sheets show the actual plans, but gives you an idea of where the courts are actually being developed, so they fit pretty well size-wise between that existing swale and the driveway. There's still about a, I think about ten or twelve feet from the driveway itself to where the fence line of the tennis courts will go. And then on the left side, basically fits in pretty well to the top of the drainage swale there. There will be a small wall there, I think it's two or three feet tall, just because the way the tennis courts get graded is, they're pretty flat with pitching from kind of one side to the other, more or less from Nevers Road up to the Plum Gully Brook. So the tennis court's pretty straightforward with a little bit of parking added down in the bottom left-hand corner, both handicap accessible parking and parking available for people going to the, to the site. During most days, most school times, it's really going to be priority use for school activities. In times when school is out, there will be additional parking that will be adjacent to the school up at the top that's still closer than the current existing condition and has sidewalks that are available to get down to this area. In the, on kind of the right-hand side, you can see we are relocating the existing throwing events from the left side to the practice field on the right side, and the smaller courts there are the four proposed pickleball courts. One of the things I kind of wanted to point out about this one is, we're trying to tuck those behind a couple of the existing sheds that are there, doing that for a couple of reasons. One, just ease of access of getting storage materials there, but also to try to cut down any of the noise that might be created from the use of the pickleball courts. Again, we've maintained this about five hundred feet from the nearest house, which is the one that's on Collins Crossing there, but, you know, general overlay of the aerial. So here is the layout sheet, just kind of superimposed in the plan. Again, not much different here than the plan we just went over, but kind of shows that the existing swale is getting maintained, where the courts are going to be, shows the parking on the bottom left, and the proposed pickleball courts on the top right. And then this is just grading and sediment erosion control plan, so it shows that we'll be putting in straw waddles basically all along the limited disturbance. There'll be a detention basin that will accommodate any of the increases in stormwater runoff that would basically infiltrate there before it would overtop and then get into the Plum Gully Brook. The plan as far as how the constructibility of this would go is soil stockpile would be on the lower end of the sheet, closest to Nevers Road. on the lower end of the sheet, closest to Nevers Road. Um, that'll allow trucks to basically be loaded from there to keep as much of the disturbed area and, um, stockpiling as far from the brook as, as possible. Some of the dark squares that are around there are inlet protection for the, uh, existing catch basins that are out there. So any of the catch basins that'll be out there will be fitted with, um, inlet protection.
Do you try to stay close to the microphone?
Oh, sorry. Um, so a couple of the other things that we added to this one are some, um, evergreen plantings and some shade trees. There are shade trees that were proposed in the corners, um, on the right side, and then there's a uh, be an area of gray change that we're going to be putting some trees there as kind of a, a buffer for that. The lighting for these would be kind of surrounding the, the facility, and I think the language that we're requesting, um, I think it's forty-five or fifty feet, um, from the project description. So these would be lights that would be less than thirty feet tall. But in a manner to get them to be safely lit for the fields or for the courts, they basically end up in the corners of the courts, on the outsides of the courts, so they're not like in the middle where somebody might be going for, for a ball. These are all full cutoff LED type of systems. Pretty different from the type of athletic field lighting you might see over at the Little League Field or, uh, across the street at the baseball field. We have, uh, no lighting, uh, proposed when we get to the property line, so the foot candles are, are zero at that point. So this one honestly is pretty, pretty straightforward. It fits in pretty well to the site. We're improving the parking. Uh, we have a couple of spots for some additional plantings and then, you know, the location that we put for the pickleball courts, um, trying to keep it as far from the houses as possible. One of the things that we explored was the idea of trying to put, uh, sound mitigation around the entirety of the, uh, pickleball courts. The difficulties on that is plantings really don't do anything. Wind screening, uh, no matter what kind of wind screening you use, it really doesn't do anything. So the only thing that we found that really could have an impact is, um, it's more or less a rubber mat that is, uh, more or less acts as a wall that you would be, you would have to put around the whole facility. The school really doesn't like that idea, uh, because now you're going to take something that should be open, so for security purposes, you can see if there's kids in there, um, and make it so there's basically a wall around the whole thing because you wouldn't be able to see inside of it if we were to put this, this rubber matting along it. One of the things that we thought might be a good consideration, um, is that upon, you know, the constructibility of these being completed, uh, we could review if there is a need for some of that matting to be installed. And maybe we would just put it on one side of the fencing or another. But because we are such a significant distance away from the neighboring properties, we feel pretty good that this isn't going to have an impact on them, but, you know, we're, we're happy to entertain language as maybe a condition of approval that say, you know, in the first six months to a year of the implementation of the courts, uh, to be reviewed for, you know, sound attenuation needs at the nearest house or something like that. But, um, currently we don't have it proposed on the plan, um, but we do have ideas of what would make it work if it did end up being an issue in the future. So here we'll jump back over to the existing tennis courts and the area of the field and light development alongside the, uh, additional emergency access way and travel path. So you can see the whopping schools on the left, uh, now we're on Sheet's, uh, EX one, I think it is, uh, so the third page in the, in the set. Showed you some of the conditions of the existing tennis courts. Obviously they are in need of upgrades. And we can do those upgrades, uh, from the courts that we've gone over. As you can see from the existing conditions on the left here, it's a, a recent, um, recent aerial photo that was completed. There's a pretty substantial amount of vegetated buffer that is around the site along the property line. There's a couple of houses that are behind the tennis courts, and then there's a few houses that are on Mountain View Road. As I go through it, you'll see that we're, we're trying to do everything that we can to maintain that buffer. And also do what we can to add additional screening, um, topsoil berms and do different things to make it so that, while it's already in existing use for athletic events and there are lights on the existing tennis courts, uh, we're trying to do everything we can to improve upon those situations with our current proposal. Just to give you an idea of what that buffer looks like as well as how the site is developed, we pieced together pictures from each of the various kind of, uh, spring, summer, fall and winter. On the left side there is April, um, so you can see all the leaves and stuff are starting to come in. Uh, with good amount of evergreen trees there. When you get into August, um, yeah, obviously everything's in full bloom and pretty dense. If I go to the next page here, we have, um, that was site condition in October. Leaves haven't started to change yet, so they're basically still in the same condition as they were in August. Um, and then just a, a little bit of a zoom in from that previous aerial that kind of shows, uh, while those existing trees are pretty substantial, um, when you get into the wintertime, you know, they, we thought it would be prudent, um, to add some screening trees kind of along the, uh, the Mountain View side to, uh, help fill in that, that existing, uh, vegetated area. So the, this being the kind of overlay of the layout plan on the current site. As you can see, the site is more or less tucked up against the whopping school, um, or the annex building. So the way that the site has been developed was to maintain that hundred-foot setback for the lights from the property lines. You can see those kind of end up, uh, in the, sort of the middle of the tennis courts. The proposed bleachers that are for this, that will kind of facilitate the development of this are on the, kind of the bottom side, that'll be the home side bleachers. Those are set for one thousand seats to match the, uh, existing stadium or the existing track and field. On the far side, um, they're set to basically match the visiting side that's on, on the, uh, existing track and field. On the top, upper right-hand corner, that is an emergency access and maintenance path so that you can get down to the field because the gray change between the school and the field will be about, uh, fifteen feet. We're planning to have, uh, somewhere in the range of a five to nine-foot wall that goes along those bleachers. One of the reasons that we thought this made a lot of sense is because we did various test pits throughout the site. The si- the site is very sandy soil, so the digging's going to be very easy. But also it really gives you a nice sense of arrival when you come up through the bleachers, um, and access the site basically from the top. So the, uh, when you drive up and when you walk up, you really have a sense of like, wow, I'm at our new field and this looks great. Scoreboard for this is in the upper left-hand corner, um, that's an LED scoreboard, fully programmable, so whether it says South Windsor versus, you know, East Starford or, or Little League versus Pop Warner for, you know, dads getting out there and having a football game or something, be fully programmable so you can put anything on there. Not super clear on here, but on the other sheets, you'll, you'll see it where we have the, uh, the screening that we're proposing, uh, but basically wanted to show you on this one that the field sits in pretty tight to, um, the annex school, and we're trying to tee up the driveway or emergency access improvements that will be kind of right across the, uh, I forget the name of that road, but right across from Iris Road in the corner. That will give a really good improvement to pickup and drop-off operations, uh, access for emergency vehicles. And then, uh, we could talk a little bit more about how that pickup and drop-off operation is going to be. Here is the layout plan, um, so the kind of star-shaped, um, blobs, I guess you'd call them, are, uh, those are the proposed screening trees. Currently we have them called out as white pines, uh, we've heard some considerations to do, um, teeters, but you know, we're, we're hoping to make those whatever kinds of trees we feel are appropriate. And then on the left side where that existing vegetated buffer is, um, from the first set of plans to this current set of plans, I think we added about eleven to thirteen trees on that side. We also added a, a gate that's near where the proposed detention basin is going to be. I did a lot to try to enhance that, that existing buffer. As far as the pickup and drop-
Do you point to the?
Uh, where my cursor is on the left side here, that's the eleven to thirteen trees, I forgot the number. That, that we added along the Mountain View side. And sheet number, I think, is, uh, LA one. So we'll have a double entrance in from across the existing road there. And then you'll be able to loop back and get into the parking lot of the annex building or there's a secondary access to go right into there, but we will have a raised island, basically between the existing parking lot that we're doing improvements to and the drive aisle. So we kind of separate those two things so we're not getting intermingling of people wanting to go into the, uh, pickup and drop-off operations that should really just be parking there. We're going to be doing some restriping of the far left side, which is closest to the track. What that's going to do is allow a significant amount more queuing of, of cars, uh, within the site before they ultimately get into the part where they would be picking up and dropping off. One of the other things that we thought would be very prudent and, uh, appropriate to do for this is to improve the access for students to be able to get out of the parking lot and not have to walk through the parking lot. So the, kind of the shaded gray line, that's, uh, where my cursor is, starts over here on Iris, comes across the site and then goes down towards the school. That'd be a sidewalk that people can basically get out of the car, walk along the sidewalk and access the school. And both conversely, athletes coming out of the school will be able to access the site uh, through the sidewalk and not have to walk through, you know, that, that large parking lot that's there. One of the things that's a separate project that the town is going to be doing is they're doing sidewalk improvements along Iris Road. So this plan will be taking into account, um, those sidewalks which should be completed prior to the start of this, this project. So basically creating, uh, a very new walkable facility, um, with, uh, parking improvements. This one is a little bit hard to see, but this shows the grading improvements on top of the existing aerial. There's pretty significant berm that we're doing on the right side and stormwater basin on the upper left side where the lowest tennis court is. Here's the actual plan, so it's a little bit easier to see. So, uh, as a cost savings measure and one of the ways to, uh, kind of promote the use of development of that berm is all the excess material from the cutting of that wall and the topsoil will be able to remain on-site. Also the material from the tennis court can remain on-site and be built as a berm along Iris Road, and we'll also be putting plantings along there. I think we doubled the amount of plantings from the first set of plans to this current set of plans. And the reason that we did that, um, is because the school wanted to make considerations for the existing neighbors that currently look over at the Little League Field and the old tennis courts that they don't have to look directly into the, uh, the new proposed improvements. Even though, you know, it's still mostly athletic field use. On the left side, there is the proposed storm drainage basin, and, um, you can see those plantings there, uh, again. So the way that the synthetic turf field works is that the water does not drain across it, it drains through it. So there's a eight-inch stone base that's beneath the field. Because the sa- the soils are very sandy out there, uh, we did various percolation tests and test pits out on the site, and that actually allowed the majority of the water to infiltrate into that sandy subsoils. Anything that does get into there will travel across the field through the subgrade and get into what we call, uh, our collector pipe system that will then outlet to the storm, stormwater basin. All the water that's being collected from the proposed driveway and parking lot improvements will be collected through a series of catch basins that will ultimately discharge to that storm drainage basin as well. We have been going back and forth with engineering about the development and review of, uh, the storm drainage system. Mostly changes to where some of the pipes go, um, adding a couple of rain gardens for some currently low areas. We feel pretty good that we're in a pretty good position that, um, really just one more set of revisions that we can get before the, the next submission and we should be able to clear, clear up anything we have outstanding there. Under our proposed improvements, we believe we, based on the engineering submission, that we have a reduction in all stormwater events. So the basin will both allow water to infiltrate, it'll be a stone-lined basin, so more water will be able to get into those sandy layers. And really feel like we've been able to fit this into the site and really maximize the amount of usability while uh, improving the storm drainage, improving the access, improving the emergency access, and also adding some of the, uh, additional parking spaces. Currently on site, there are five hundred and fifty-ish existing parking spaces. Under the proposed plan, we're going to be just under six hundred. I think we're adding roughly forty-five to fifty parking spaces. One of the other exemptions or waivers is, uh, a that the site, the way it currently operates, uh, doesn't meet what the zoning regulations say for minimum number of parking spaces. Here, I believe that parking count would be like thirteen hundred parking spaces, which is, I think, right around the number of kids that actually go to the school. But because the site currently operates adequately and we're increasing the number of parking spaces and the access, we feel that, you know, the proposed improvements are going to continue to function and operate the site, uh, sufficiently. This is something that also will have to get reviewed by the Office of State Traffic Authority, OSTA. It's a major traffic generator with the number of parking spaces that it has. So upon, uh, completion of your guys' review, the next step is we submit to them, uh, for any other signage or lines or considerations that they have for the parking. Let's see. So the other thing that we wanted to do to try to give you, uh, a sense of how we develop the site with consideration for the neighbors is the, in the upper side is we cut two sections, so you can see them in kind of profile view of how the grades-
Is there a drawing, uh, that we have for that?
No, this one is a, a presentation graphic. So the sections kind of show that, uh, in the middle one being the upper section, try to scroll over with my thing here, so this upper one is this section. So you can see there's, uh, the proposed plantings, then there's the dropdown for the stormwater basin. Um, I know it's a little bit abrupt looking on this one, but the side slope that's going up to the field is graded at, uh, I think four to one, so it's a grass maintainable slope. Then you can see the field nice and flat. We put the people kind of on either side just for, uh, clarity on height. Through here, on either side of the field, we'll have, uh, it's called ball safety netting. It's basically a netting system that'll stop balls from, you know, going into, down the road or going off the field. The netting system is twenty feet tall. And then as we move further to the right, when you get off the field, it drops down a little bit to, uh, depression area that we're going to end up developing as a rain garden, and then goes back up again through that proposed berm, with the plantings on top before you ultimately would get over to Iris Road, um, and some of the houses. So we, we've done pretty much as much as we can to kind of screen both sides. On the section on the lower side, as we move kind of up in grade on the existing conditions, you can see the field is flatter, uh, more consistent with the grades around it. The one thing to point out is the, kind of the guy that's standing on sort of the right side, which I'll try to highlight here, this guy. You see he's, he's above the field, so that's part of that wall system that we'll be developing. So you'll be able to get from bleachers through walkable sidewalks, um, and ramps all the way around the field. And again, you can see that berm there that's kind of all along Iris Road in an effort to help screen the facility. So we feel like we've done a, a great deal to try to fit this in as best that we can with consideration for the neighbors, with consideration for the regulations, with consideration for the engineering. And one of the things I, I just kind of wanted to bring Frank the Principal up to talk about is a little bit about- to talk about is a little bit about another why of why this project has to happen. Uh, I know we talked a little bit about the four pillars of trying to do those improvements, but, um, I think he'll be able to give you a little bit better insight about, uh, kind of day to day of why this needs to happen.
I'm not as tall as Chris. Thank you, Mr. Hulken. Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, my name is Frank Rizzuto. I'm the principal of the high school. I just want to take a moment to underscore the multifaceted nature of this plan. The plan provides for an additional roadway to allow for emergency access into the campus and will play a critical role in alleviating the traffic strain in the morning. Anyone that's been around the campus anytime between seven and seven twenty knows the strain that I'm referring to. The additional field to include lighting will be a huge boost for both high school programming and community use program. New tennis courts are sorely needed and the new pickleball courts are tremendously responsive to the fastest rising sport in our country. I have said more, on more than one occasion, this plan addresses needs and not desires. This need is recognized by our superintendent, myself as the principal, our athletic director, countless student, athletes, families and coaches and other eyes as well. For example, I call attention to the most recent New England Association of Schools and Colleges' visit to South Windsor High School. This took place in twenty eighteen. N I A S C, as it's affectionately known, is the accreditation agency for its member schools. At the conclusion of a site visit, the committee provides a report including its commendations and recommendations. One significant recommendation focused specifically on athletics facilities. Develop and implement a plan to ensure that the school's playing fields support athletic activities. I'd like to share with you the larger narrative and context these recommendations were part of. You see some of these excerpts in front of you. The outdoor playing fields, and I quote from the report. "The outdoor playing fields require upgrades in order to fully meet students' needs. Specifically, the school's turf playing field lacks lighting, which significantly limits opportunities for students to practice or host athletic games in the late afternoon and evening in the fall and spring. As a result, the school essentially loses a playing field due to darkness every day, limiting or even preventing some teams from fully participating. The school's soccer field lacks the necessary drainage to keep the surface playable after inclement weather, making it unusable for practice, practices or games for extended amounts of time during the fall and spring. Limitations to the school's playing fields limit the full delivery of the curriculum and other learning opportunities," end quote. That is a recommendation that speaks volumes and a new turf field with lights certainly help address those needs. With that, I would like to turn things over to our superintendent, Dr. Carter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My apologies for joining the presentation in progress. Uh, my schedule was a double header tonight as I needed to be at the Board of Ed meeting, which runs concurrently with this meeting. Um, but I did just want to clarify for the public what the status of the high school campus improvements plan is and why we are here this evening. I've been asked that since the town council did not approve moving this project forward to referendum, why would we still be seeking P and Z approval? And the answer is that a great deal of time, energy and money has already gone into this comprehensive plan that is an initiative within the Board of Education's strategic plan as well as a response to the longstanding expectations of our community whose members have voiced safety concerns regarding both traffic and the tennis courts as well as the decades-long desire for a lighted field. Because planning and zoning approvals do not expire for five years, it is very possible that this council could revise its thinking during its current term or a future council could choose to send this project to referendum. Therefore, it would not be fiscally responsible or in the taxpayer's best interest to duplicate the costs that have already been incurred, um, or the staff time that has already been spent, should this project move forward within the next five years. The public may not be aware, but certainly commission members know that a great deal of time and money is needed just to meet the requirements of an application to P and Z. Applicants must come to you having done research, hired consultants and conducted studies such as soil samples, traffic studies and drainage analysis. I hope this clarification is helpful to the public as I know many members of our community are still following this plan closely. And with that, I'll turn things back to Chris Hulk.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
Um, again, Chris Hulk from Field Turf. Uh, one of the things I neglected to, uh, mention was a little bit more on the athletic field lighting that's being proposed for the field. Um, so those lighting poles are seventy feet tall. Uh, one of the exemptions that we're, we're requesting, uh, is because they're higher than the thirty-five feet that are, uh, kind of the threshold. Um, to properly light the field, they need to be at that seventy foot tall. Um, some of them go much higher. If you've ever, you know, driven down the ninety-one eighty-four corridor and seen, um, the Hartford soccer field, you see those ones are, I, I think upwards of a hundred plus feet tall. Um, if they get, the lower they get, the more glare that they get. So it makes it unsafe for the players to be able to, to actually see the ball. Um, the higher up that they go, the better they are for lighting the field. Um, and again, one of the major clarifications on these is it's, uh, an LED full cutoff system. So significantly different than the Little League field or even the baseball field that has existed for, I think, the last thirty, forty-plus years. Um, they really just light up the field itself. Um, they don't, they use, uh, a much higher quality of light, a much more directed light. Um, if you're familiar with how the baseball field operates, basically they push light out and those are metal highlight fields, um, metal of highlight lights. By pushing the light out, they're basically hoping that they light up everything and eventually light up the ball as well. These ones are, uh, a much newer technology, uh, much more sophisticated and much more direct to the actual field itself. Um, we've done, I think, somewhere twenty or thirty of these types of fields over the last five years. Um, and they are significantly better at operating the lighting system for the fields while having very little impact so surrounding neighbors, um, as possible. Uh, the way that they function, they can physically be turned on and off, but also they function through an app on your phone that, um, anybody can give, given access to. Um, there's a phone number that can be called to turn the lights on and off. And also the lights themselves have three phases to them. There's a game mode, a middle mode and a low mode. Um, there's about a seventy-five percent reduction in energy costs when you go from the high mode to the low mode. Um, and the other thing that's really nice about that is people that are on the site, it gives them a visual indication that it's time to go. Um, so the, the lights basically go down. There's still plenty of light to get out, uh, from, safely away from the site, back to your cars. But, um, they're much more efficient, much more direct, uh, much better ease of use and access. Um, and I'll be able to service these, this field significantly better than any of the other lighting systems that are, uh, in the town. Um, but a couple of the special exemptions that we described in the project narrative, um, were for the height, uh, but we are able to maintain those, uh, further than a hundred feet from the existing property line. Um, also without being able, without having to take down, um, any of the trees from the existing vegetated buffer. Um, with that, I don't think that there's, I think we've kind of touched on, excuse me, on everything that we wanted to get through. So, um, we're happy to answer any questions or give any further clarifications you might have.
We'll, uh, get back to that after the public has a chance to comment. Is that the end of your presentation? Okay, I will listen to our director of planning.
Thank you. This is a request for a special exception to table three point one point one A and say plan of development for new synthetic field turf, uh, and a special exception to six point four point three four for athletic lighting. Um, we're also looking at seven new tennis courts, four pickleball courts and traffic and circulation improvements around the high school school campus at one sixty-one Nevers Road in the A twenty zone. So when we're evaluating this project, we're looking at both the general special exception criteria of eight point seven as well as the special exception criteria of six point four point three four, which is related to the sports field lighting. Um, I did provide the commission with a report, uh, listing all of our special exception criteria as section eight point seven. Um, a narrative was provided by the applicant with their, um, answer to how it meets these kind of criteria just for, not to read the whole thing into the record, but we're looking at things that, how the plan is consistent with the plan of conservation development, how it's meeting the zoning requirements, how it's, the land is being, if it's physically suited for this. We're looking at adverse, potential adverse impacts on surrounding property values, traffic hazards. Those kinds of things are our general special exception criteria. Related to the, uh, lighting, we have a special exception that says if you're proposing recreational field lighting higher than thirty-five feet, it's by special exception. And the criteria that the commission looks to review that is based on looking at the effects on existing uses in the area, the conservation of surrounding property values and the character of the neighborhood. Look at the impacts and the capacity of the proposed and present utilities, streets, drainage systems, sidewalks and other elements of the infrastructure. Look at the suitability of the land for the proposed use and any environmental impacts created by the proposed use. Again, consistency with the plan of conservation development, the rec- recreation master plan. Um, so the commission may impose additional conditions in accordance with those regulations to ensure that these kinds of special exception criteria are satisfied. So just something to keep in mind when we're reviewing this application. So as I indicated, we have been provided with a narrative addressing these things. Um, specifically, we're looking at a stadium with twelve hundred, maybe fourteen hundred seats to be lit by four seventy-foot high poles. These poles do meet our mi- minimum distance of a hundred feet from the property line. Uh, we have been provided with a photometric diagram showing the lighting levels of, of all the different fields. So the other lighting includes some, um, typical street lighting under thirty-five feet that would be used for the tennis courts and the pickleball courts, uh, seven and two lights respectively. And then we also have the photometrics for that. Um, I guess one question I did have is, is there any specific hours that would be, um, like, are out, lights out at nine on any of these things? Or are there any specific, um, rules that are beginning to be put in place by the school related to the lights? And secondly, and I think this was, is someone answered by Mr. Hulk, is, you know, can these be shut off remotely? So some of those, a little more details on the lighting aspect would be helpful. Also with this plan, we see additional, uh, parking lot lighting in the new parking areas. This is consistent with what we typically see in our parking lots, the full cutoff, dark sky compliant fixtures. Again, lighting levels show a uniformity across the site, which is what we look for. Some of the more general criteria for consideration with a special exception are things like noise, traffic, um, and the effect on existing utilities in the area. So with the traffic improvements proposed, they're going to redesign the existing parking lot at the Wapping Annex and provide an interconnection to, to the realigned access drive to the high school campus. An additional parking that will be created with the redesigned parking areas as well as new access will provide for better circulation around the rear of the school and help alleviate some of the existing queuing that takes place. Um, as indicated, this has been something in the works for a while. I know the police has had, um, several discussions on, um, helping to design these, these improvements. With these improvements, it'll be a net gain of forty-eight parking spaces, uh, resulting in a total of just under six hundred spaces for the site. Um, as part of the application process, the town currently has a traffic, um, a certificate for this based, the state traffic certificate. Anytime you're changing things on your campus, you do have to revisit the state to see if there's any improvements they'll look at. So, um, the applicant did indicate that's part of the process once they receive approval from the town. They have met our parking lot, parking lot landscaping requirement with shade trees throughout the parking areas. They are requesting a waiver of the E V charger regulations at this time so they can come up with a more comprehensive plan, although this plan does show a location for them. Um, I would note there's an emergency drive entrance being proposed at the southern end of the property coming off of Ayers Road to accommodate emergency services as well as some handicap accessibility to the parking spots for the opposing teams, bleachers. There will be a gate at that side of the, um, entrance there. There's a five-foot pedestrian sidewalk shown to be built by others and that is the town to be constructed, um, I think it's the summer of twenty twenty-four, a- along, uh, Ayers Road. And that'll tie in with this project, um, when this project comes to fruition. The connection will be made, the new sidewalk along the access drive. Sidewalks are proposed to go along one side of the new driveway. The school drive shows two raised, uh, sidewalk crossings being added and a speed hump to slow traffic, some traffic calming, we like to see that, and provide a pedestrian connection along the building frontage. The two minutes path network is shown along both sides of the new field and will tie into the new emergency access drive on the south end of the new pathway being created in the northeast corner of the field. The plans show a four-foot-high vinyl fence that will be between the walkway and the playing field. And I just wasn't sure if there's access from the walkway or not. So maybe we can just clarify whether there's any access or gates that'll be along that area there. Um, there's already an existing sidewalk network further up Ayers Road that provides for access to the offsite parking, including sidewalks and crosswalks that exist that currently, um, provide access to the school. There, there was a traffic study done and I'll defer to Jeff, Jeff, if he has any comments on that. There is no buffer requirement as this site predates our fifty-foot buffer requirements. However, there is the expectation of screening along the residential property boundaries to the south and west as well as to minimize impacts for the houses across the street to the east. To the maximum extent possible, existing trees and existing vegetation will remain and be supplemented with a variety of trees and landscaping and or fencing. Landscaping improvements proposed include adding buffer screening trees along the East Street boundary. And, um, it's showing a repairment of the existing fence. We're, we're looking for a little bit more detail in this area. Um, the, from what I can tell from the plans, it appears there's a fence that's encroaching on the town's property that it's not really the town's fence. Um, we have other school areas, most recently Pleasant Valley, where we've had some encroachment issues that they don't go away unless we address them. So with this plan, um, I've asked Chris to, to address that fencing. We should have our own fence along that property bound that the town has control of, similar to the fence we have in the other areas, and then supplement any vegetation that we might need to, to, um, address screening in that area. So I think we've had some discussions in with the revised plan. I'm hoping we'll see that addressed a little bit in more detail. Um, as shown, there is a four-foot-high berm shown along the Ayers Road frontage with evergreen plantings that will certainly provide a, a good screening along that part for folks across the street. The plan does show some new directional site signage to be added to the school entrance. Um, as I had indicated before, the police department, um, worked with the, the school on these plans. The fire marshal has reviewed the plans and, you know, everybody's happy with the improvements from a safety perspective. Um, one of the plans did show, at this time, there's no utilities being brought for any, uh, facilities at all. There was a porta potty shown on one of the plans and I was kind of hoping we could relocate it in a more discreet location than right up front. So that may be something we could look at on a revised plan. Um, the only concession hut, they're showing one concession hut, but it will be for, only for drive products. So they're not providing any utilities to that at this time. Water pollution control authority would not be required again because we're not adding anything to the sewer system. The regulated wetlands, uh, on site, the applicant did, uh, go in front of the wetlands commission and received approval on January seventeenth. Uh, there was a requirement of a vegetated swale along the potunk, uh, I'm sorry, the Plum Gully Brook and that has been added to the plans. Uh, if this application's approved, the planning department has no additional modifications to request at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Doolittle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, as Chris indicated, we've reviewed the plans. Um, we still are reviewing the drainage report and the drainage details. Um, and we will work with him to flesh out those details with regard to the drainage, um, especially as it flows towards Mountain View Drive. Um, one thing we do recommend right away is there's a stone swale down the south side of the field and a small stone infiltration trench on the north side of the field. We recommend those just be grass swales, um, and the water flow down to the larger infiltration basin on both sides of the field. I think that'll be easier to maintain and more attractive in the long run. And then, uh, any other questions with regard to the traffic port? Um, it is alleviating some pressure in some areas, but there's still a lot of traffic in and out of the site. It would be helpful to have a more extensive description of how they envision traffic flowing in and around, out of the site um, with this extra driveway. That's all I have.
Thank you. So now we'll, uh, take comments from the public. Um, you may come up in any order. Just be sure you identify yourself and sign in. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak about this application?
Good evening. Uh, my name's Larry Shipman. I'm an attorney in West Hartford and I'm speaking on behalf of the- on behalf of the neighbors on Mountain View, Eric and Elizabeth Hill. They are the most impacted by this project. They are currently bordered by the existing football field, and now they will be boxed in by a second stadium, which, well, you're maintaining a similar use because it's a field. You're building another football stadium, which is going to have twelve hundred more additional seats in addition to the ones you have. So you have issues there. You have deficient parking as it stands right now, and you're adding ninety-four thousand square feet of gross floor area, which the field would be considered. Yet you're adding fifty parking spaces where you probably should be adding somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred and fifty parking spaces. You have an existing waiver, but that applies to the conditions on the ground now, not the conditions brought about by the, by the new addition. Secondly, I kind of disagree with the, this is, that the buffer requirements don't exist and that, you know, this plan calls for very minimal landscaping and protection to the abutting neighbors. It's a field right now. It's, it's a grass field. There's no bleachers. There's not much that goes on there. Nothing happens at night. Now you're building a lighted football stadium. The Hills don't necessarily object to the project, and the train is on the tracks, and it, it seems like it's going. But I think far more consideration can be taken to that, to that buffering on that side of the property. If you look at the pictures attached to my correspondence, those show views from their property, and that's a far different depiction on the existing ground as to what you're seeing in the, in the, in the layouts that are shown here. It's a direct view. The fence that's there, that's Mr. Hill's fence, that's probably been there since his family's owned this property for over sixty years. It's, it was, it's not there to keep people out. And I think the Board of Education, the applicant, has a, has an obligation to put in a new fence that would keep people out, to put in plantings that meet the requirements of your Section Six Site Development Regulations in Article Six. It's a great regulation, and it would do wonders in making this a better application if that was adhered to. You have, in addition to the screening and the buffering requirements, which lay out in your appendix to that in Section eleven point nine, it, it lays out how you stagger the trees, that the trees should be eight to ten feet at the time they're planted, that they should be evergreen varieties, but also deciduous and flowering varieties. And it should fill that buffer area. It shouldn't just be a row. It should be staggered so they can grow in. Also, your, your regulations require that the applicant would have presented cross-sections at the time of the planting of the landscaping, and then a five-year projection of what it would look like, and then a twenty-year projection totally grown out. And if you look at your own regulations in the appendix, it creates a huge buffering area that would really eliminate a lot of the problems that these particular neighbors are going to have, but any other neighbors to this project. It's a very big project, and I get it. I've coached football for twenty years, and I coached football with your head football coach. So I, I understand that there's a reason why a town wants a lighted football field. I think the cart's a little bit before the horse because the council hasn't even made a decision on this. And it may go to referendum, and at some point, it should have come to you for a Section eight twenty-four referral because of the major impacts on the property, the municipal property and the roadways. The new traffic pattern that's been designed, it's not up on the screen, but it's going to bring the queuing line through the existing parking lot that abuts the new field, right to the Hills' property, where the cars will start the queue with the lights shining into their property. If you look at, I think it's LA Two that, that Chris Hulk was referring to, on the, I think it's the eastern border of that parking lot, there's almost no plantings there. There should be some plantings there. Behind the existing football field, there's that blocking type of fence, but it's not really well-maintained. So they, they're actually asking me not to ask for that to be put up all around the property, but rather just an eight-foot chain-link fence with the plantings in front of it. But along that parking lot area, there needs to be dense, dense vegetation to prevent the headlights, the door slamming. That's now the queuing and drop-off lane. So it's really a very impactful project. It's doubling the size of the seating. The questions that, that arise are, are you going to have multiple events going on at the same time? So now you have capacity for over three thousand people for your six hundred parking spaces. Who's in charge of it? Is it locked at night? Is it really open for community use? And if it is open for community use, who's policing it? Who's letting people on and off the field? Who's in charge of it? The Hills now have problems with the existing field because there's external loudspeakers. So this new football field is going to have loudspeakers, which is a PA system. So can we decommission the PA system on the existing field? That, so that they're not bombarded on, on all sides of their property. Their property also consists of, in addition to their house, the four lots that run up to their property. So those are four buildable lots. It's an approved, they're approved building lots. They're going to be very difficult to do anything with. So it, it's a perfect opportunity to, to put in some screening and buffering and fencing in there. As, as far as, you know, in, enhancing the traffic pattern, I'm not sure that it, that it does much for that, and that's other issues for, you know, members of the community to discuss on the Ayers Road side. But I, I don't understand why the circulation of the traffic has to go through multiple parking lots now. I am not sure that that creates student safety or not, as opposed to just bringing the, the new drive through to, towards the front of the school building. So, you know, you're spreading the traffic out, but you're actually circulating through parking areas where kids are going to be walking all the time. I just think more consideration needs to be given. As I said, I, I think it's not the greatest place for the football field. They're relocating the tennis courts. The tennis courts could likely be repaired. They're at a much lower expense. They're relocating the tennis courts for the purpose of being able to shoehorn the football stadium there, when they already have, I mean, there's no rule that games have to be played at night, and I get that. But I think, given the situation, much, much more landscaping should be shown. It should be shown on a plan. It should be detailed on a separate landscaping plan. It should show the varieties, the spacing, both low cover and the tall white pines. It, like I said, the, the density of the existing foliage looks good on those plans, but that's not what it looks like on the ground. And you can see the fence that's there. And it shouldn't be incumbent upon the neighbors to protect their property from a municipal project. I don't, I just wish you would consider the landscaping, the buffering, the screening, and not have that be where the budget is cut on this project. It's a very large project. I think everybody knows that. And putting in dozens more trees to create that buffer should not be a problem. It should be, that would be a benefit to how your stadium would look, and it should also, it would also be a benefit to the Mountain View properties and the other properties that are surrounded by a lot of these improvements. I haven't spoken to the pickleball or the tennis, but I'm sure that there's neighbors over there, and we all know that the pickleball sounds can drive somebody insane. I don't have anything else. I just wish that when you, when you review this, that you look at it, and you have the right to approve the project, deny the project, or approve it with modifications. And I would suggest that, or request that, a major part of modifications in any approval be a very detailed landscape plan that truly protects the surrounding properties and their values.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak at this time? Anyone else from the public would like to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we will let the commissioners comment. Commissioner Boganski.
I just had a couple of questions, just to confirm. There, there is plans for the new tennis courts and the pickleball to have lighting there as well? I think I saw, I heard that.
Mr. Hulk, you can answer that.
Excuse me. Yes. So part of the approval process we're looking for is to have lights approved for the tennis courts. The current ones have lighting, so we want to be able to maintain doing that.
They are shown on the drawings, right?
And, and they are on the, the layout, or LA Two sheet.
Want to tell us with sheet, so she can see that.
Yeah, LA Two, I believe it is. They're the, I think it might be slightly different from, from this plan, but the, the plan in front of you, LA Two, has the light pole locations on it in the corners of the.
So if I'm not mistaken, they're on the center lines of the tennis courts and on the line between the four, each of the four pickleball courts.
The revised photometric plan that was submitted as part of the second round of submission, they're actually in the, the corners now. So that'll be a revision that we make a, as an adjustment as far as the final set of plans.
So do we have to consider the neighbors that live around that area that right now do not have any lighting and like what the hours will be for that, taking into consideration, you know, nighttime football games? My kids play football, and I'm not sure that those wrap up at nine o'clock at night either. Do we need to worry about?
So we've discussed this with the school, and I think that they are pretty much all in agreement that nine o'clock is a pretty good threshold for being able to conduct the activities that they need to and then be able to turn the lights off. In discussions with multiple different facilities, both around South Windsor and through the different projects that we've done, nine o'clock's a pretty good threshold. That lighting system can be preset to be turned off at nine o'clock. They could also even preset it to, say, eight fifty. It goes from high to low, and then ultimately shuts off at nine o'clock. They're on the existing tennis courts. They have some signage describing usage of the courts. And I think one of the things that the school wants to be able to do is add some additional signage to these courts to describe in, in more in-depthly hours of use, which, you know, I think currently, and their statute is eight to eight, but they want to be able to get that up on there so they know when the courts will be turned off, and also when the school will be using them versus the public. But yeah, nine o'clock is, I think, very doable.
I think we should stipulate that the lights don't go completely off suddenly with the, do that staged reduction so people can safely exit the, the playing areas.
My, my last real quick question, and this is probably more to the turf, right? I was just, I did a little research on some of, I know some states are questioning turf usage right now for different health reasons, but more, do we have any concern with the runoff from a turf, from turf fields into our water?
I haven't heard of any concerns with stormwater runoff from turf fields. I think what's, the infill that's in the turf, and Chris can verify this, is designed to stay there. It's not something that washes out. And there's a, like you said, a big stone layer under the turf that's going to catch anything that does go through. So I haven't heard any concerns with any pollutants running off of these fields.
Yep. So a lot of the things that you, you, we hear throughout is safety concerns or runoff concerns, things like that. In the studies that we've done for various other places, we haven't seen any of those as needs for concern. And again, mainly that is because the infill doesn't move around, basically stays in place. The water drains through the infill. The backing is, it allows the water to go through, but not the infill to go through. And then the water actually starts to get filtered through that stone base. So because it's, really operates sort of how you would envision like, like a pervious parking space, except you don't have to worry about sanding and salting and stuff like that from, from winter operations. So it really acts in the same sort of way where the water gets treated and filtered out through the, the proposed base of stone before it gets into the, the sandy soils beneath it.
If I, if I could follow on with her question, though, I thought I heard earlier that we're having issues with the existing turf field drainage. Is that true, or?
I don't know of any issues with that. I could look into that.
So one clarification on, on that is, so your existing stadium field has what we call an alternative infill. An alternative infill requires that we put a shock pad underneath it. That was very popular based on perceived safety concerns, you know, ten, twelve years ago. The proposed system for the new field is the same sort of system that we install throughout Connecticut, a sand and rubber system. A little bit difference that we have in the rubber that we put into our field, our fields, is it's called cryogenic rubber. So the way that that's developed is not just ground-up tires and thrown into the field. It's actually frozen with liquid nitrogen, so it pushes out a lot of the air particles before it gets ground up. So it ultimately comes out much denser, so it's able to maintain its resiliency for a long period of time. So the new field will be a sand rubber system with no pad, because what we've seen a lot of times on fields that have pads is, there's something to do with, like, the thermal change and freezing and thawing, and the pads don't really seem to operate very well with the maintaining of the turf itself. So sometimes seams pop. Sometimes they can pull away from the edges. And, you know, with our newer types of technology, the sand rubber system is something that will work very well for the school for twelve to fifteen years, which is the lifespan, without any, you know, concerns. So a little bit different than the existing field, but a bit of a newer technology.
Okay. Thank you. Picture with that?
No questions.
Yeah, I was looking at the site plan you have up there, and it's just me, I question everything, but I'm not seeing the benefit of having that second entrance into the high school. I'm thinking from a cost-saving measure, and I have to side with the additional buffers and all that. And it seems to me that around this new field, the amount of buffering against a neighboring property, it doesn't really hold up. I don't think it's enough. Driving through there, most of the trees, and they do, of course, come down in October, but they're, they're mostly leafed as opposed to evergreens. All right. I think more vegetation out there is probably a good idea. That second road, I'll back up to that. It's just something more for maintenance. I can see the additional parking spaces, but I'm not sure of the actual benefit about having it as a drive-through. There's an existing road on the other side of the building. To me, the entrance that goes into, like, Calla Whopping, but goes back and forth, but that entrance into the high school annex, I think is sufficient, but adding those number of spaces on the west side of the school will certainly add to the, what you need for the stadium. But again, I think some of the money should actually go to the buffering around that new stadium. Lighting, I know, was a controversy for the other existing football field over the years, but of course, LED lighting and the onset of that has changed everything. I just wanted to say that for the public's benefit. Lighting controls as such, you can actually dim the lights as such and work it off the moonlight and things like that. I've worked on these projects for warehousing and things like that at my present job, so I know what it can entail. But that's something, certainly, it's a benefit to neighbors and, of course, people who run the field. Back to the tennis courts, I understand there's lighting in a front, something or thirty footballs. They're probably lower than what you would need in a football stadium. Now, the neighbors are on that side street, they're aware of this?
As part of the.
Of this proposal, if you will.
This proposal. We were required to notify Butters within five hundred feet of the property line, so they've, they've all been notified of the project. so they've, they've all been notified of the project.
I'm just a little surprised that, that figured we'd have a room full tonight, and I'm not seeing it, and I just, maybe I'm missing something, but, all right. So that announcement has gone out and people are aware. All right, but, uh, thank you, only comments I have, but, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Waller. Mr. Paul.
Uh, Mr. Hulk, I'm the, I'm in favor of the second access, because I've gone up Ayers Road. I don't know if you've done that in the morning, Mike, but it's quite interesting to get into the school. So I do believe that, that second curb cut and access to go to that existing back parking lot is a fantastic idea. This is, to me, this is a fantastic plan. And on that, if I could have the athletic director, Mr. Satulak, come up for a second. I got a quick question. The... I graduated here in nineteen eighty-one. Population was sixteen thousand, it's twenty-seven thousand now. And we've lost inventory in fields. As the community's grown, we've lost fields, so... But we've always wanted lights, and here to me is a good opportunity, especially now with the new technology with cutoff lights and whatnot. But my main thing with that is, the lighting in the spring sports, when do your, when does your season begins? Like now, correct?
Yeah, the spring season began March sixteenth. That's when trials could officially begin. Baseball was able to start a week earlier and softball for pitchers and catchers.
Okay.
Only.
And then playoffs begin roughly when?
Uh, playoffs, well, league playoffs would begin towards the end of May. State playoffs at the beginning of June for spring.
So, March first through June first. In the fall, when we have daylight savings and whatnot, when does that season begin and when does it end?
For the fall? Uh, the fall usually begins in August. Football obviously begins a week earlier with conditioning and OTAs. Um, and then about a week later, all other fall sports can begin. And football goes till Thanksgiving. Other sports end about a week, week and a half earlier. For fall.
Okay. So, and in that time, I mean, we don't have any Sunday games. There's nothing with the high school CIAC, there's nothing scheduled on Sundays.
Correct. It's very, very uncommon for us to, you know, have a Sunday game, e- even a Sunday practice.
Okay.
Um, the only time we've had Sunday practice is if we had a Monday state game, and we've allowed teams to practice on a Sunday the day before.
So, in the spring season, March through June, as we're gaining light, lights are really not an issue unless you want to have a night game?
Correct.
All right, so, the main thing is, once we get into September, I don't know when they change the clocks. Is it mid-October or something?
First of November, around the first of November, yeah.
The critical, my, my point is, the, the amount of time that the lights are on is minimal. Like, it's, it's limited to mostly...
We would anticipate in the fall, having five, we have ten football games, varsity football games, so we, five home, we'd anticipate possibly five home football games at night. And then for the other fall sports that would have night games, boys soccer, girls soccer, and field hockey, two games each at home. So a total of eleven regular season home games in the entire fall season.
Okay.
Can I just follow up on that question? Do you turn the lights on at dusk, not at sunset? When do you turn the lights on, in terms of...
For a night game?
For a night game, yeah.
Um, you, you'd want to turn them on so they're fully on prior to the game warm-up, you know? So maybe a half an hour before the game? You'd want them to be fully on so teams could warm up, and then as it got dusk, you know, we'd already, um, they've had the opportunity to adjust to it.
Okay. That, that was my main thing, is just the frequency of the lights being needed. Now, say, in the fall, in general, you know, whoever's on the, I'll call it the existing stadium field, by five o'clock, they're done, practice is over just because...
Yeah, usually by five thirty, you know, in the fall, yeah.
And then, so how much would it extend it? Like, we wouldn't go in shifts. We're not going to like five days a week, okay, football practices from two to three thirty, and then soccer takes it from, is that going to be, would that be an every day? Or would you be able to still, you're still going to utilize the other fields, the multipurpose, the stadium?
Right, I mean, it, with the second turf field, it allows us to have more practices earlier and finish earlier without a need for having night practices.
Okay.
Whereas now, one of the main issues is if we're told that the town's grass fields are shut down because they're too wet, like at Nevers and the multipurpose grass field at the high school, we pretty much have to cancel all the freshman and JV practices and say, you're not having practice today. And we have to split the turf field with the football team and girls soccer, let's say, for the first practice, and then boys soccer and field hockey for the second practice to get them in before dark, without any lights on the existing field. And, you know, that loses opportunities for freshmen and sophomore teams and puts them behind.
And who would be in control? Chris was saying, you know, you can do it remotely by your phone now with an app. So who would have, who would be in charge of that? Like, who would have that code?
I think that's an administrative decision we would discuss for the people working the event. Either could be myself, the principal, you know, associate principal working the event, um, the night event.
Okay. And that's all I got for you. Mr. Hulk? The, the issue with the buffer to the Hill property, again, it's, the more things we do, it just costs, it does cost the town more money, it's a town project. But as far as that buffering, could another row of pine be added to stagger? And then we'll do some, you know, add some, maybe some, possibly some understory stuff such as mountain laurel and some roadies that are ever, you know, evergreen?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that we're happy to add some, some more plantings. I think we are also, as part of the next round of revision of plans, hopefully the, the last one, we will be adding in a new fence line there, so it's a town-operated fence that'll be able to match the fencing that's going around the site. But I mean, yeah, it's, I mean, it's just money. It's, you know, it's, you know, we'll, we'll add them in if it's, you know, the right thing to do for the project. And it seems like everybody's pretty on board that it's the right thing to do, so I don't think we have a, have a problem with it.
Uh, just to, you know, keep the peace, so... All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Commissioner Betera?
Uh, just adding on to that, they also mentioned about extra fencing around that. That wouldn't be a problem to, to put that in either, right?
Yeah, so, uh, currently there's two layers of fencing. There's a one that's current, like right around the limits of the field, just inside of the darker gray line. And then there's one that's basically going to go from that existing fence line at the corner of Irs, run all the way along Irs, all the way along the upper side of the property along, or, or, upper side of the field, along the sidewalk. And then it's currently going to ti- shown as tying into the, uh, I think it's a six or eight foot tall black final chain link fence. And then this plan shows the existing fence being maintained and improved. One of the town comments was that we'll be adding in a new fence, basically from this corner down through the majority of the property and ending in a location that, that makes sense, uh, based on the existing vegetation. There was a question, just since we're talking about fencing, if the field has access, um, and there will be two drivable, two double wide gates, um, one on the bottom left-hand corner and one on the top right-hand corner. And then there'll be, I think, four or five, um, single gates. Those are requirements that we, we put in when we're dealing with, um, uh, the fire department typically. So there'll be, I think, six or seven total gates.
Also, if I understand right, the new synthetic field will be where actual games take place and the existing football field would be mostly a practice facility at this point?
Um, the school is still going to utilize the fields, all of them on site, to their, you know, fullest extent that they can. Typically the grass field, you want to try to limit those to ten to twelve hours of use a week. They would still likely have games on both. We've discussed it and, you know, they've, as far as I know, never seen a situation where the, all of the stands have been filled. But knowing that most people would go to, uh, a game that's going to be planned for a night event, the school knows in advance of when those events are going to be. They plan to post all that information on the website of like when the games are going to be and when the night games are going to be. But they're not planning to have any major events that would happen at the same time. There could still be, you know, two things going on at once, but not to the extent that they would be filling up the, uh, the parking lot or the bleachers by any means.
Okay, and there's no plans to add lighting to the existing field, right?
No, it, it wouldn't meet the, the current zoning regulations to be able to get, um, distance away from the property line.
Okay. And then, um, also with lights at the tennis courts, what would, and then the pickleball courts, would there be a time off when those lights would go off?
Yeah, I think that nine o'clock timeframe is...
Okay.
Is, is pretty doable. I think everyone's, um, from the school perspective is pretty much fine with that. I don't think that they have any team or planned events that would be required to be used, so it'd really just be as long as the town is, is kind of okay with that, um, which I think...
So, you know, I would like to hear the answer to those questions about the intent of using the fields from one of the school officials. I know you're probably well-informed, but you, I need someone to speak for them.
Sure. So I'll bring them up. One thing I, I did want to just touch on, there was a comment about, um, or, or maybe just a clarification on the parking. So under the new conditions, proposed conditions, we're going to have just under six hundred parking spaces. While there's not a specific description of parking use for fields in your current zoning regulations, most places are similar to gathering operations or things like that. I think it's churches gathering spaces, it's, um, one space for every three seats. So if we went by that same logic, um, you would need for this stadium with the thirteen hundred seats, yep, uh, what's that, three hundred and fifty, three hundred and seventy total parking spaces, to be able to use the site during one of those, I mean, that'd be the biggest event that they would have. So, of the six hundred parking spaces, there, there should be ample enough. The other, you know, it's not part of your regulations, but, um, in my research through some of the online parking requirements, some of the schools that I saw in like Texas have a similar, uh, three to one ratio for seats versus parking spaces for gathering spaces. But whoever wants to come up and talk about the usage?
So, uh, I think the question you have is, would we have two events going on at once? We do do that now, and I'll give you an example. In the fall, we may have a boys soccer game on the turf, which starts at three forty-five, and a girls soccer game on our grass field. When you first pull into the school on the left, the MPF multipurpose grass field. That's a rare occasion, but there's sometimes when we have two home games going on at once. And, you know, if they start at three forty-five or four o'clock, they're going to be done by five thirty. And that would be the extent of that. There would never be an opportunity where we could have two night games with only one field that could have lights. So, I mean, could we have a game at three forty-five that ends at five fifteen or five thirty and then start a football night game at seven o'clock on a Friday? Yeah, that's possible. But again, by that time, the other crowd is filtered out.
So I guess the, you have different levels of attendance with different sports. You might want to comment on that. If you have, if you have two games going at the same time, it doesn't have to be at the light at, you know, before the lights go on. What are the parking needs? To, to address this question for two games going on together, but maybe one's football with a crowd and one is soccer or lacrosse or whatever?
Well, if there was a football game going on at night, we wouldn't have another game going on at the same time. That game would already have been over for two hours, or an hour and a half already.
You had said all the football games will probably be at night, right?
Yeah.
All the home games?
The five home fo- football games would probably be anticipated to be at night, the home games.
Okay, so then you couldn't have two game, you couldn't have another game going on while the football game's going on?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
But if you had two games of some type going on, what, what is the experience with the parking needs?
Um, it hasn't been an, any issue up to this point in the ten years that I've been athletic director there. Um, we've never had a parking issue. If there was like a girls' field hockey game going on on the turf and a girls' soccer game going on on the MPF, it's never been an issue before, and that's with less parking than what we're anticipating now. So...
Thank you, and I think Mr. Zetland wants to speak.
Yeah, i- if I could just hitch on to that. So, I, I will tell you, between Mr. Satulak and myself, we have a combined twenty-plus years, myself in my current role as principal, the previous role as associate principal, and Mr. Satulak with about ten years as athletic director. Our most marquee events in terms of attendance, for example, a marquee football game on a homecoming weekend or whatever it might be, I will tell you firsthand on multiple games that the parking it takes place exclusively in the lot that is directly next to the current turf field. Spillover parking happens in the parking spots in between the main building and the annex, formerly known as whopping. And that on rare occasion, there are a couple of cars that trickle into the front, and I just think that those folks strategically do that so they don't have to deal with traffic making their exit. My point being that there's about a surplus of two hundred spots in the front of the high school that are not used. And if there's a marquee game, like a state game or something like that, and we're going to pack, we could literally pack in almost double of our attendance. And so with the new lighted field where something like that, a- a- as like the last few moments have shown, that would be the spotlight contest. We couldn't have anything else because A, there would be no lights, and B, we wouldn't have the two of but against one another. So there would be more, in our experience, there would be more enough parking to accommodate for those handful of night games.
Thank you. So I now have a list of questions, we'll see.
Okay, I guess I yield?
Dr. Carter, yeah. I, I'm sorry, I, I didn't know if you were done. I thought you were...
Now I, okay.
Apologize.
I just wanted to make a couple clarifying points, um, because I'm not sure if this, if this was clear. The pickleball courts are not planned to be lighted. So it's just the tennis courts. And, and in actuality, um, we originally were just doing conduit for financial reasons. We didn't even include lights in the, in the original package. But we are seeking approval so that if and when that could be afforded, it, it may be part of a future proposed plan. And just to be clear, the lighting of the tennis courts is really just our effort to support community interest. We don't have a need or a priority for lights on the tennis courts for the high school, but I think you know this plan was really designed to meet the needs of the high school, but also try to meet the needs of the community. So it's not a high school need for lights on the tennis courts, but we are trying to, you know, offer amenities to the community. And then I did just want to address the, the question about traffic. I can tell you that there are people, their sole reason for supporting this plan is because of the change in, in traffic pattern. The traffic pattern was not a product of response to the field. The traffic pattern, um, as Jeff will know, this is something that we've been discussing with South Windsor PD for years and years and years. And if you're ever at the high school at morning drop-off, the complaints that are warranted, by the way, the complaints that we get with the traffic in the backup, you have a bottleneck situation at the, that the sole entrance of the high school that we're trying to mitigate. As, as Jeff alluded to, it's not going to be a perfect solution, but it is going to be much better for the neighbors who live right in that area who are hit every day not even being able to leave their house. And the parents that are dropping off, um, ha- we've had significant complaints. We, we've actually had pedestrian inju- injuries. And I do know that the community center has spoken to me directly about their concerns about just drop-off pickup, parents using their lots. And so we're really trying to think through how to make that whole area safer and a better flow, because right now Ayers and Nevers just, they all meet up at one spot and it's sort of a, just a face, it's just a bottleneck right there. It, it is quite something. And so, just to, just to clarify, that this is sort of a three-pillar plan, but we've combined them. This would be an important project in and of itself, just the traffic pattern, but we've combined them for cost efficiencies so that we're not standing up separate crews to attain these, these three goals. And, and the tennis courts, of course, um, the number of complaints that we have about the tennis courts. And I, I won't speak for John Caldwell, but if he were here, he would tell you about the costs and the time that they spend every single year just trying to Band-Aid together those tennis courts. So that's a need independent of whether we ever have a, a lighted field. But it's really cost efficiency as to why we wanted to combine all these. And, you know, we're reluctant to do this, the traffic safety changes without doing this whole project together, because you may discover something when you go into the ground or whatever can happen, and now you want to shift something two feet this way. We really wanted to try to do it as a whole project if possible.
Just to clarify, uh, you're going to have drop-offs on both, both driveways now? Pickup and drop-off?
Sure, well, th- there's no perfect visual for this, but I'm actually gonna go back to the cover one to kinda- I'm gonna attempt to go to the cover one here. Mr. Hulk, maybe you can kinda give me cue there, the, the very first. This one, this one will do. So currently, as Dr. Carter i- i- identified, wh- what you have here is a lot of traffic coming in on the Nevers roadside. And so any parent drop-off, students arriving to the school, faculty arriving to the school, buses arriving to the school, there's only one entrance point, and it is here. Uh, similarly, the traffic coming in on the Sullivan side through Ayers, uh, coming in here. Under the, the current plan, so i- i- we will just make believe this second roadway is constructed under the current, uh, 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 under the proposed plan. The traffic coming in from the, the Sullivan side would likely turn here right into the new roadway, into a new drop-off area for students where they get off onto the sidewalk and then access one of the two buildings. And then those folks would be able to circle back around very quickly and as part of the restriping that Mr. Hulk spoke to in the, the early part of the presentation, and then exit out in front of the annex. Meanwhile, to the question that, that, that was just asked, the folks coming in, in the, the current, um, the current roadway, they'd come in, they'd do drop-off in front of the high school the way they currently do, and then exit off on, on Nevers Road. The beauty of this proposal is the, the amount of queuing, and again, Dr. Carter alluded to this, is the amount of queuing that happens on Ayers Road, it does become a stalemate. And for about fifteen minutes, any of folks living in those homes and the, and folks that are making an earnest attempt to arrive to school on time, good luck with that. Because if you leave three minutes a little bit too late from your homes, or if you're a community member and you're trying to get to work and you get stuck at the wrong spot, it's not gonna work out well for you. So the intent of this with two roadways, it is gonna take a tremendous amount of traffic off of Ayers Road, put it onto the campus, and have those families exit from two different spots. The traditional exit spot, uh, Ne- Nevers, and now in, in a newly created one as part of the proposed plan. So we envision that to be tremendously successful, to get kids to class on time, and most importantly, for everyone to be much safer.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank, I know it's a rush hour that occurs at the high school. Both my kids go there, so. Uh, one of the issues I hear from the kids, and this is, I'm not taking a left, but I am. Uh, there's kids crossing the road because they park over by the ballfields, and there's traffic and there's buses, there's everything, and the kids are meandering through the cars and trying to get in. And that's something that slows the traffic down too. If you have a legitimate crosswalk where cars have to stop, that might actually, and the kids crossing a group, that might help. But it's kind of a free-for-all in the morning, I've cut through there, uh, that may help the situation too. The only reason I brought up the second road was that I worked in government for a number of years and sometimes these things, and civil engineering is expensive, and sometimes it can make or break the project. So that's the only reason why I suggested it. If you're gonna put a lot of buffering in, you may not have the funding for it. So sometimes you have to sacrifice one piece of the project for the next, but I totally understand where you're coming from.
No, completely understood. I, I just wanna speak to a moment to, to your comments. So I, I will say, you know, I'm, I'm gonna tip my cap to the students that do park in the upper and lower Dupre lots. Those kids are very good about using the sidewalk and using, I'm kinda hovering over it with the mouse. They do use that crosswalk area. I think what you correctly identify is while they're not weaving and they're, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, use the crosswalk, when they do, any traffic that's coming in from the Sullivan side is stalled. Because the kids are gonna walk at a normal pace, they're not gonna run, and so there's, that's five or six cars that could be coming into the campus but are not because kids are crossing. Uh, and then the traffic that's coming from the Nevers side, they're pulling in in succession, and then the weave happens again once the crosswalk is clear. So again, I, I'm tipping my cap to our student body because they, they are using the right thing. But I think as you appoint, a- as you point out, that, that creates the stall. The moment you have that second roadway, and again, there'll be a, an appropriate crosswalk there, um, it's, it's, it's gonna eliminate a ton of that stall.
Especially cars coming in off of, uh, you know, from Sullivan Avenue side, they'll turn right in there.
Right.
It should help the situation, I hope. But I'm not, I'm not saying this is the answer, but I don't know if you've seen that the rail trail they converted, we have the push button, the lights flash, and people cross, or when the cars do stop, something like that may help all the kids from wandering across the road. But if it got to that.
Okay, um-
A quick question if I could?
Sure, go ahead.
So that, I like the aspect of increasing safety with the road and back, well, not back, but to the east or west of the annex. Is there a reason why we couldn't just do that project this summer and solve that pro- solve that problem? Because th- if this is gonna go to referendum in November, we're talking a long time before this hits reality? Why couldn't we just fix that?
Um, the pro- right now, we're estimating that to be, I think, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. There, that is not currently in the budget. Um, that-
But assuming we can get the budget for it, like, and, and five hundred grand is fairly pricey for that one small segment of, of roadway?
Um, I guess I will say, I, I do not share your optimism about the funding based on conversations that I'm having with just our operating budget right now. Um, you know, there, there is like a ten-year backup on capital projects of other projects that also have safety issues that, for both the board and the town, that are part of a queuing of capital projects. Because that's where that would likely come from. And, and tha- that project, although it's been discussed through planning and zoning in previous years, um, we think for efficiency's sake, if we're doing it at the same time with this project, A, we won't have to go back and redo it if it turns out that the field, there's an, you know, something happens with the field and now we wish the road had been two feet this way or something. We think that financially it makes sense, and from a plan, it makes sense to still tie it in. If it became clear that this plan was never going to happen, then we likely would try to do that in isolation. But I think we'd like it to be part of the whole plan, um, first. And it, and it is not in the queue right now for, for funding for the FY twenty-five. And I can tell you that there are so many projects and capital projects that are really important that are ahead of this in the queue.
So no desire to separate that as a separate application?
Um, not at this time, not at this time.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like to go through my questions before anyone else, uh, have an opportunity.
Could you make a point of clarification on that comment?
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, so just to expand on that, um, I think this is sort of a comment for, for planning as well. If the overall project is approved, portions of the project could ultimately be built, um, as separate pieces. Doesn't all have to be built all at once. So one of the benefits that like, um, of the overall project is if for some reason, you know, two years go by and everybody's like, no way, we're gonna do the tennis courts and do any of that other stuff. Um, part of the approval could be the development of that, and that one piece could be implemented, um, through this approval process.
Okay, so I would like to talk about pickleball noise. Um, I put in the record some articles, uh, one of which was an article from the Wall Street Journal, uh, which kind of hit the national news and, and brought to light the issue that people have with pickleball noise. Um, another article was about Walter Reed. Um, they added pickleball fields there, and, uh, those fields, uh, were causing problems in the area of Walter Reed. Uh, and then, um, I did a little more research and found, uh, one of the companies that sells pickleball equipment was actually recommending a five-hundred-foot distance between the pickleball fields and nearby residences. There's also a petition afoot in several states, not including Connecticut, to require pickleball fields to be six hundred feet from residences. But I think, uh, Ms. Lipe, you have determined how far are these pickleball fields from the nearest resident?
I think we indicate about five hundred feet would be the closest residence on either side.
A little more than five hundred feet, right?
Yeah.
Um, so then the, also the applicant has talked about putting up sound barriers, uh, if necessary. Uh, so I think what is the right thing to do here is, pickleball is a delightful thing to have. We wanna have it. Um, if the noise issue isn't solved by being five hundred feet away, we need a condition to add sound barriers at some point, um, if it becomes an issue. So I think we're, we're good with the location of the pickleball fields. But, uh, I would, you know, we'll have a condition to, uh, provide for that. I would also like to see on the drawings, you know, where you would put the sound barriers, where you'd have to put them there, so that it would be provisional, um, you know, sound barriers.
So Chairman, just as a point of clarification, I, I printed out those documents you gave me, and I'm just circulating amongst the commission. Um, they will be made part of the record. Um, I didn't make copies of all of them for everybody because a lot of papers. But you, you will have access to them as part of your record.
It's a lot of reading, and, uh, I think I've summarized it pretty well. Okay, um, parking for the pickleball. I notice you have a little bit of parking for the tennis courts. How are you addressing the parking for the pickleball, which is gonna have probably doubles? Uh, you know, at maximum, you could have, uh, four, you could have sixteen players. Um, and probably some people standing around waiting for their turn. Uh, all of them will be probably coming there in cars, so, um, and I'm very concerned that we don't add to the parking issue at the community center, um, that, you know, it's already, you go in there many days, it's hard to find parking. You have to park up, uh, closer to the, um, the playground, so you could talk a little bit about parking.
Sure. So, um, the plan for those is that they would share the parking that's both proposed, um, in the lower left-hand corner for the tennis courts, and also, uh, the parking that's, uh, just at the top of the hill for the, uh, part of the school. Um, the community use of those would be anticipated that would be after the school operations are completed. Um, while the school has been amendable to people being outside or walking the track or things like that. They don't wanna promote the use of, uh, too many people being out there during school hours. Um, but there would be the availability of the parking, uh, on the top, kind of upper right-hand corner and, uh, the shared ability of the tennis courts.
So the existing parking that's near the entrance is what you'd plan to use?
Yep, so they would basically walk down the sidewalks that are there, um, go across the, uh, the striped, uh, crosswalk. I'll zoom in. Uh, so come down, come down the sidewalk, go along the crosswalk, and then be able to, to access the, uh, the courts through, uh, new pathways.
Now, does the, uh, brook there prevent you from running a sidewalk on the right side of that?
Um, I wouldn't say it prevents it, but, um, being as how the other sidewalks on the other side of the road currently exist and are adequate shape, um, we didn't wanna just add more sidewalks for, you know, when, when the current ones will operate effi- uh, effectively. Um, it would also require us to go back to planning and zoning as a, or sorry, back to wetlands as a, a separate impact.
Are you going to allow the public to use the tennis courts and the pickleball fields during the school day? And during the time when the school buses are coming or going?
We would kind of follow suit with a current signage. So for example, on the current tennis courts, there's signage there kind of highlighting when the courts are, are, are not able to be accessed. So I, I, I think the current verbiage is something to effect from two-thirty on to whatever, whatever particular time it is. We would envision signage on both the pickleball courts and the tennis courts so that, you know, if those are not necessarily being used by high school programming, specifically our, our PE courses, uh, you know, and seniors from ac- uh, across the street wanted to access the courts or anyone just wanted to access the courts, based on their, uh, existence on, on, on the campus, um, they would be available for community use. Um, the, the use of high school programming would override that. And then certainly in season like now in March, when, when, when the tennis season's underway for the boys and girls, we would have the signage so that from two-thirty to wh- whatever time it is, they would not be available for the community. So, but I will add, just, just for, um, just for good measure in terms of being community-friendly, the, the seven tennis courts, uh, is actually a, a big degree of support. So that, that maybe non-tennis aficionados would, would not know. A high school tennis match, it consists of seven matches. With the current courts being at six matches, that mean one, that means one has to conclude before the seventh one gets on. The reason why that's relevant is because that keeps the community members off the courts until there's resolution to the match. So usually, first serve doesn't start until about four o'clock in the afternoon. And a tennis match, unlike a timed sport like basketball or football, very difficult to predict. I say that having coached the sport for twelve years. So a sport that might start, the, a match that might start at four might not conclude until six-thirty or seven, and that's prohibiting the, the community from accessing the courts. With seven courts, a varsity match is gonna conclude that much quicker, and then a varsity contest is concluded and the community can access, uh, that much faster.
I keep hearing more things that you've thought about that I never would have realized were there. Uh, so, okay, that's why you have seven tennis courts. Um, the, the lighting on the pickleball, you said there, or Dr. Carter said they won't be lighting them?
That's right, I'll underscore what Dr. Carter said, yes, there's no planned lighting on the courts, on the pickleball courts.
Now, is that a sport that likes to have lighting, or do they like to not have? I mean, 'cause I'm thinking, put it in the plan, if you don't have the money to put the lighting up, don't put the lighting up, but-
I, I, well, I think the, the lights don't direct, uh, directly benefit high school program per se. At this point, pickleball sport is not like part of the high school athletics stuff. So the, I think the, the, the thinking being the use of natural light. And I think actually as, uh, uh, it's kind of a seamless transition from your own identification based on the resources in terms of the sound that pickleball creates, uh, that, that might not be such a bad thing to not have lighting on the courts too.
Okay. Going down my list here, making sure it hasn't already been addressed. I agree with all the comments that we need a much better job of providing buffer planting around the outside of the, of the thing. You know, deciduous trees are pretty, but they don't, as the picture showed, attorney's picture showed, uh, they don't provide an actual buffer. So you can look, you see right through them, that's, you know, the beauty, the canopy, and it's not down low. Um, the restrooms, uh, where are, where are actual restrooms? And then porta-potties gonna go now?
So, um, as far as restrooms, the plan is to maintain, maintain the use of porta-potties that, uh, currently all the facilities on site use portlets. Uh, right now, we have two locations shown. One is kind of right at the top of the, next to the concession stand. Um, the other set being down near where the ADA accessible parking spaces would be. Um, just so, you know, visitors would have the ability to just go right to the ones closer there. Um, and people leaving the bleacher area would access it right from the top. Um, we're obviously open to locations for those to be changed, uh, various degrees of the plans. We look at the far left-hand corner. Um, we felt that, you know, that needed some revision, uh, based on concerns with the neighbors. Uh, we thought this was a little bit more of a centralized location, but, um, you know, we're, we're open to different areas, but I, I don't know if we need to specifically define them or maybe just define areas where they don't go. I, I don't really know the answer to picking the best spot for them.
So Michelle, you have any comment about that?
No, I, I guess one, one of the things, and we can look at it a little bit closer, is, you know, if they're gonna be there as a permanent solution, I mean, maybe we put a little bit of screen to block it or so. You know, again, it just seemed like we're putting this nice, beautiful field and putting porta-potties front and center. And I just thought maybe they could find a better location that weren't quite front and center. So, um, but, but there's different areas that we could look, and again, it may- So, but there's different areas that we could, and again, it may be just a matter of doing a little bit of treatment that screens it a little bit, so it's not so, you know, I know porta-potties can be treated a lot of different ways, so, we can work with Chris on looking at that.
Yeah, on the other hand, the service companies have to have access.
Yeah, no, I get it, we want to make it near the parking areas, so that they can certainly get to them, yeah.
I guess, should you find they're not a good location, you could come, it'd be a minor site plan change to move them around, so, it wouldn't be an issue. Okay, let me continue down my list. When I looked at the lighting summary, it didn't really, I don't think it showed the lighting levels outside the field, it showed the lighting levels inside the fields, unless I'm missing something.
Can I piggyback on the bathroom question? Do you mind if I piggyback on?
Oh, sure, yeah.
So, bathrooms and locker rooms will still be at their current location, all the way back over at the high school?
Yes, the current plan does not plan for a new locker room or new bathrooms. I think the plan, as far as kind of how the sidewalk is shown, sort of going over to the whopping building, is that they would be able to potentially use the stuff in there in an instance when porta-potties might not be on site, they would still have access to both existing buildings, but no new locker rooms.
So, I guess, like, I'm looking at this illumination for the new field, and I see the, I guess these are lumens within the field area, but not the periphery, and I, you know, I believe that that kind of lighting is exactly what we need. I'd like to see the zeros out there or something. I guess the third sheet?
It's, so, in the middle, towards the back, so, the way that the Musco company does their photometric plans is to describe how they're lighting the field, and then they do show where the zero ends up at the property line. They don't fill in in between the two, but I think it's maybe the sixth or seventh sheet in there showing that they do have zero foot candles at the property line.
Got it. So, what about lighting in the bleachers? I mean, it looks like the bleachers are actually off the lighting, at least the visitors.
Yeah, so, they, they didn't, I don't know if they, they, I'll say off. So, on, I believe it's either the fourth or fifth page, I don't know if there's exactly a clarifying remark, but it does show what the foot candles will be in the home side bleachers, which is roughly in the 20 or so foot candles, and then in the area where their visiting bleachers is going to go, in the 10-ish foot candles or so. So, they will have adequate lighting within the...
Okay, I did find a sheet that shows the bleachers here, okay. I wouldn't want people to be walking around in the dark, especially on a bleacher.
Definitely a good point.
What's the basis of the electric vehicle exception here?
So, the, the thought being that if we do it to this educational facility, that all the other educational facilities should follow suit, and the school was looking to have some more time to review all the educational facilities within the town, to really have a better game plan for moving forward with that. I don't think they're looking to not do it, I think they're just looking to have some more time to evaluate the rest of their townwide properties.
Okay, so, they got to be to do, to lay out the plan for all the schools at once?
Yes, as part of a future project.
There's a slight offset between the driveway and Sunset Terrace, so the intersection, at least on this drawing, doesn't appear to be square.
Yep, so, there is a light pole that is on site, I actually might have the picture of it, that has a ton of stuff on it.
I'm looking at LA1.
Yep, so, this is the light pole. So, we're maintaining this existing light pole, and we're tying the driveway a little bit closer and tighter to it, so that it'll be more of a teed-up intersection. You see, now, there's a significant offset to it, I know the plan's a little, this picture's a little askew, but it will be much more aligned, and because it'll be in only, in that particular location, we're trying to maintain that existing light pole while still getting it as teed up as we can.
So, you'd rather not have ever so much have to move the light pole?
Not that one.
I can be sympathetic to that. Okay. Okay, those are all my questions, do any of the other commissioners have questions or comments?
I just said one additional one. There's a public comment regarding parking, and I've been involved with different events at Nevers Road Park, and it seemed like it overflows into the high school, so, being all-town property, there's any large events at the high school, the field, I'd like to think they can park across the street, utilize the space over there. There's been some pretty big turnouts at Nevers Road Park for different events, and it never seemed to be an issue, because they do use the high school, so it should switch the other way, if needed.
Anybody else? Okay, there's a number of open questions, so, we need to reschedule the public hearing, and the ninth, we're going to be meeting downstairs, and there wouldn't be room for, there might not be enough room, so I'm thinking we would move this a month out.
Yeah, unfortunately, in the ninth, we don't have this room, nor do we have any television or any kind of Facebook, so, for public viewing, the best would be to move it to the 23rd, April 23rd, so that would be a four-week from tonight.
So, I'd entertain a motion to that effect.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing till April the 23rd.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Public hearing is now closed to 9:15. Okay, if I can find my agenda. So, I'm now going to call to order a regular meeting, we have the minutes, February 27th. Are there any comments on those minutes? Do we approve them by consensus?
Approved by consensus.
Okay, they're approved. Public participation, are there any members of the public, if you wouldn't mind taking your conversations outside?
Everybody.
Excuse me.
Eric.
Please. Appears we have no one left from the public, so, go on to new business, application 2405P. Someone would like to make a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve, yeah, lost my spot.
March 26th would be the five-year date, not the 12th.
Make a motion to approve application 24-05P, Francisco and Katie Rivera, DBA, "Make Me Happy," we have a list of conditions, and I will resort to that right now. Number one is an application request for a five-year major home occupation for Cottage Bakery, 222 Graham Road, 820 zone. Should we go through all of them, Steve, or is it...
Just this, give the numbers of the standard conditions, and...
Yeah.
Actually, it's pretty much all of them.
They're all standard, so really, your expiration date would, worth noting.
Okay, so...
Just read number two.
Okay, just on the other side, these comments here. Okay, gotcha, okay. It's approval is subject to the following conditions, one, the business must be operated by the homeowner, two, the permit will expire at March 12, 2029, and will have to be renewed at that time, number three, only one non-resident employee can be hired, and four, the business is not open to the public, pickup or special orders will be arranged on a case-by-case basis, number five, refuse from the business cannot be disposed of within residential refuse, adequate arrangements must be made for business refuse disposal, and number six, any new building or alteration additions to existing buildings requires a building permit prior to the start of construction.
Second. Second, and any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I have no bonds for you tonight.
No bonds? Any old business? No old business?
Just to remind you all...
Motion to adjourn.
Just come next week.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Just remember to come next week, and you should have all gotten a copy of the plan draft, so, mark up your drafts, and we'll talk with our consultant next week on that.
Yeah, it's a fairly large document, so, please set aside some time to go through that. Okay. We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.